We call it a water, the regular scheduled meeting of the Rocky Mountain City Council on June thirteenth. The time is approximately seven oh five. At this point in time, I'd like to ask everybody to please stand and observe a moment of silence to pray. Thank you. This time I'd like to ask clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Knight.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Joyner.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Daughtry.
Here.
Bullock.
Here.
Miller.
What's my name called?
Yes, ma'am.
Present.
We have a call, okay. At this point in time, that brings us to item number four on our agenda, which is approval of the following minutes. A city council retreat held on April nineteenth through the twentieth. The emergency city council meeting held on May seventh of two thousand and twenty-two. The minutes of the regular scheduled committee of the whole meeting held on May ninth of two thousand and twenty-two. And the regular scheduled city council meeting, which was held on May twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-two. At this point in time, I'm looking for a motion to adopt those minutes as written. Okay. Motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilman Walker. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll if you'll vote as your name is called, please.
Councilmember Knight.
Yeah.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Joyner.
Yeah.
Walker.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
Bullock.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
All right, the minutes are approved. At this point in time, before I turn the meeting over for a community update for the interim city manager, Peter Varney, I'd like to ask if there are any changes or additions to the agenda as written. I know of one change, and that is to eliminate, what was that the?
To add to the consent agenda, the bars, taverns, and nightclub.
Right, we want to add to the consent agenda, the bars, taverns, and nightclubs policy. And the motion is essentially to eliminate the provisions of that policy, correct?
Rescind.
To rescind that particular thing. Is there any objection to that, or are there any other additions and or deletions to the consent agenda or the agenda as a whole? I will need a motion to add that, so if somebody, motion made by Councilman Daughtry, seconded by Councilman Joyner, with any need for discussion. Hearing none, I'll ask clerk if she'll please call the roll if you'll vote when your name is called.
Councilmember Knight.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Joyner.
Yeah.
Walker.
Yeah.
Daughtry.
Yes.
Bullock.
Here.
Miller.
Yes.
The item is added to the agenda at this time. Brings us to item number five of our agenda, which is the community update. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Peter Varney.
Just a few things to update you all on. One is a heads up, really. It's at this time of the year that the mayor and city council traditionally make appointments to boards and commissions. We have seventeen boards and commissions that you staff with volunteers. I'm planning on placing on the agenda for the work session on July eleventh, the appointment of the various vacancies that we have on those various boards. And so just a heads up for the city council to be thinking about that. And heads up for citizens, if you're interested in volunteering for one of any of those boards and commissions, need to get your interest expressed onto your city council representative or to the city clerk. There is a personal history form that we ask anybody to fill out. It looks like this, it's a one-page form. And I believe Pam Casey, city clerk who's sitting over here, has some of those forms. So if you're interested in serving on any of those, please get a form and express your interest in serving. A second thing to note is that usually a couple of times of the year, in the summertime and in the wintertime, we have scammers who contact utility customers for the city, usually trying to present themselves as a city employee and trying to threaten the customer to pay up or else get cut off. Just want to let people know that the scammers are active at this time now, at the beginning of the summertime, especially now that it's turned hot and utility bills be running higher than normal. The business collections office usually uses an automated calling system to remind customers of past due payments. They do not indicate the amount or the due date for those. They never call and demand immediate payment, and no city employee does that. No city employee ever asks to meet a customer to receive payment. And we don't ask customers to wire money anywhere, so just a heads up on that. An update on yard waste collection. We have four grab-all trucks. These are the ones with the claw that reach out to pick up bulky items and also yard waste limbs and debris like that. Four of those are in environmental services. They're all old trucks and in unreliable condition. We had ordered six brand-new grab-all trucks, four for environmental services, one for the street division, and one for park maintenance. Had been planning on receiving delivery on those trucks in December of this year, two thousand and twenty-two, and just got word last week that the delivery on those is going to be delayed until September of two thousand and twenty-three. So we're struggling to pick up, as everybody knows, it's very difficult for us and frustrating for everybody else, trying to pick up yard waste on schedule. And so that's what we're dealing with, dealing with with that. We are talking with a firm called Crowder Gulf. This is a disaster relief firm that you may remember seeing following Hurricane Floyd, engaging them to bring in one or two trucks to help us pick up yard waste at least once a month during the summer and into the fall months. So if we can get them on the contract, that would help us. City manager search. City council has engaged a firm called Polyhire to recruit a new city manager. That firm has posted the job opening on May twenty-ninth, which I think was about two weeks ago. I'm understanding, I'm told that they have about twenty applicants so far. And they've also posted a survey, a Survey Monkey, that asks some questions about what do you see as priorities for the city? What are some of the priority projects that the city manager should work on? There's a couple of open-ended questions. What, one of them, I think, is what one question do you think the city council should ask each candidate, and so on? That survey is on the city's website. If you scroll down to the featured news section and then click on the one that talks about the survey, then you can take the survey there. It's also on the city's Facebook page. My understanding is that we've received some eight hundred and forty responses to that already. They'll be closing the survey on June the twentieth, which is a week from today. We're scheduling a budget, a town hall for review of the budget by Zoom on Wednesday this week at six o'clock. So anybody who wants to learn about the budget, have questions about the city's proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget, can connect up with that on Wednesday this week. Downtown Live is planned for Thursday at the Imperial Center, Thursday this week, featuring night shift. Juneteenth holiday is planned for the weekend, begins on Friday the seventeenth, and through the eighteenth and nineteenth, a number of events and activities, parades, and so on for the Juneteenth celebration. Friday night is, begins at five points, and then the train station, lawn, Saturday and Sunday, and other places. City Hall will be closed on Friday the seventeenth. That concludes.
Thank you, Mr. Varney. Any questions or comments for city manager, Councilman Knight?
Yes, I thought you were mentioning about the runoff taking place here from Ward Seven. And the announcement sent out about.
Of the. Take place in Nashville. And I think that's depriving the vote for the voters here. Number one, when you look at the cost of gas, and then for a citizen that lives within the city limits of Rocky Mount, have to drive to Nashville for early voting. I know that, I would ask the city manager if, and the mayor and this council, if we could write a letter of concern to the board of elections for our citizens. I think it's a disgrace, and it's a way to suppress the vote for those who have to drive at least twelve miles to cast a vote and don't live in Nashville. And I don't know if it's moved back to Brazile Library, if Rocky Mount would have to defray some of that cost in order to help with that one-stop vote.
Yeah, I don't know the answers to those, but I'll find out, and I'll make contact with the board of elections people for that.
Yes, and I was thinking it's a major concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. Any other questions or comments for Councilman Daughtry?
Well, just a comment towards that. I mean, we do have a bus system in Tarver Transit that we can utilize, so I, you know, I think that could be utilized, and I believe it does cost us extra to have a separate space. And we also have to have people to work it. So I don't know if logistics is part of the issue or not. I have, that's up to the, I guess, Nash County Board of Elections. But just a comment from me in response to that.
Thank you, Councilman Daughtry. Councilman Knight?
Would. We know that for the city of Rocky Mount, for a long time, we didn't have representation on this board. And the city had to be sued, and that's why we went to the ward system. But to ask our citizens to be able to get on a bus, or a cab, or Uber, or whatever, to cast a vote, and you live right here in the city of Rocky Mount, that's disenfranchisement of the vote. It's suppressing the vote, and it's not right. And I think that we should speak to whomever in reference to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. Mr. Varney has indicated he's going to communicate with the board of elections to see what can be done or not done. And we'll get back with you. And your point, Councilman Daughtry, that we do have public transportation is so noted as well. Without any other comments or questions for our city manager. Hearing none, I'd like to move on to number six. I'd like to welcome back to the podium, one of our very own, we'll call him a rock star come back, Edington Police Chief Henry King. Please come to the podium, sir.
Good evening, mayor, city council, Mr. Varney, city manager, and the citizens of Rocky Mount. I asked to be heard tonight, or for those who don't know who I am, my name is Henry King, the chief of police for the town of Edington. And I asked the mayor, could I be put on the agenda tonight for the fact that Chief Hassel and his staff performed and displayed outstanding customer service, caring, and let me tell you something, it really touched northeastern North Carolina. Because as the police chief, I got the phone call that no police chief would ever want to receive, and that's the passing of Williams Sergeant Stan White. And it was ironic, because the day before, on May eighteenth, the mayor, our mayor, and our town council just had a cookout at the mayor's house for my staff to get to know my officers. And the sheriff's office in Chauvin County was nice enough to cover the cost of service while we had that cookout at the mayor's house. So we all got a chance to spend the day before with Stan. So when Chief Hassel called me, it was so unreal. But when I showed up to the hospital in Rocky Mount, and I see Chief Hassel and his staff and members that I served with for eighteen years here embracing Mrs. White, Stan's wife, it really touched me. And I want the citizens of Rocky Mount to know that you have a top-notch agency. This department is number one in this state. And this department, I'm proud to say that I worked here for eighteen years. And I want council to realize, if you look at the Rocky Mount Police Department over the years, you have several individuals that worked here that have went on to be police chiefs across this state. So don't let nobody tell you that your, the police department is less than anything than what it is, and that it's top-notch. And I want to stand here before you tonight to thank you, Chief Hassel, Lieutenant Tim Bunt, Richard Rogers, and Rick Miller for that day. Mrs. Teresa White has told me to convey this message, that she will always remember the Rocky Mount Police Department and what they did for her and her family, and bring her husband home to Windsor, North Carolina. And I just want to thank you and your staff, chief, for doing that for me, because it really means a lot. And we're still hurting, but it meant a lot. And I was so proud of working somewhere that I knew that when I got there, everything was taken care of, and I appreciate that. And council, I want you to understand that it was laid out perfectly, and I couldn't ask for a better treatment from the Rocky Mount Police Department. So thank you, mayor, for having me here tonight.
Thank you, chief, for coming so far to acknowledge the performance of our police department. Thank you so much for all that you've done for the city of Rocky Mount through the years. Chief, thank you. At this time, I would like to recognize our assistant fire chief of administrative planning, Tracy Drury, for completion of the executive fire officer program at the National Fire Academy. Please come forward. Okay, this time we have petitions received from the public. As I've gone through the sign-in sheet, I recognize that a number of people are here to speak on various rezoning issues. And so when the time comes up to open the public hearing, that'd be the time to come forward on the rezoning issue. As I look at the sign-in sheets, I believe that applies to Mr. Robert Doyle, Gary Puckett, Deborah Joyner, Leo Ballywag, Sheila Eli, and David Hale. There may be others, and then, but at this point in time, I'm going to call members of the public. The petition, public petitions portion of the city council meeting is an opportunity for public comment, and the city council appreciates your attendance and thanks you for expressing your views and opinions. The city council values all citizen input. And this is an opportunity to raise a question, present a request to council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer a matter to the city manager or staff for follow-up. Time will be monitored in order to give everyone an opportunity to speak, and speakers will have three minutes. Please be aware that sign-in sheets must be presented to the security officer prior to the opening of the city council meeting. If an organized group is supposed to speak on a common issue, please designate one person to present the group's comments. If your comments in regard to an item of the subject of a public hearing, please wait until that item is introduced to speak. Time will also be monitored. If your comments are in regard to an evidentiary hearing, additional time may be granted. City council requests that you please adhere to the following guidelines. Complete a sign-in sheet, address comments to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or city staff. Speak from the podium in a civil, non-argumentative, excuse me, and respectful manner. Personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated, and you will be asked to sit down or removed from the meeting. Keep comments to three minutes. This time, I'd like to invite Tom Harris to the podium.
Good evening, mayor, interim city manager, members of the council, city attorney, city clerk. First of all, Chief King, thanks so much for coming to Rocky Mount and expressing your words. There are several items on the agenda that I would just like to put my thoughts in as you take a look at these particular items. Number twenty-five, the purchase of the residence or business at thirteen hundred Holly Street. I believe the sales price is a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The appraisal is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. I just think it's in the best interest that we, the city, purchase property at the appraised value. And if you take a look at item number twenty-six, the purchase of the AMC property, that is being purchased at the appraised amount. So please take that into consideration, and I hope this will not be a precedent if the city starts buying property more than appraised value. I think it's good that the property is being demolished at six locations, and that is in regards to item agenda number eighteen. Next month, I will be joining the council, and I look forward to working with the council and see how we can take these properties, as well as other properties the city owns, and do something to improve the lives of people here in Rocky Mount and trying to put some affordable housing to our constituents. Last but not least, I want to talk a little bit about the Berkshire Project. That is number sixteen. It's good to see available resources the association has is of a hundred thousand dollars, coupled with the grant amount of a hundred and fifty. So that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's there to cover the total cost of two hundred and twenty-one thousand. I just hope that the city works with the association. I don't know how the proceeds are going to be dispersed, but I hope the city does not disperse all of its one fifty before the association uses some of its available resources to cover additional draws requests that are made. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. This time, I'd like to invite Crystal Weems Anderson to the podium. Okay. Is she outside, maybe? All right. I'd like to invite Adrian Copeland to the podium.
I also have concerns about items on the agenda. Also, item sixteen, I think we need to rethink this grant of a hundred and fifty thousand to Berkshire Acres altogether. They have already been given seventy thousand dollars in the past in grants, forty of which we have no idea what it was used for, because no project was ever listed nor any terms. And now the terms on this one fifty have changed. Originally, they claimed a hundred and fifty thousand was the total project cost. Yet now that number is over two hundred and twenty thousand to build a fifteen-hundred-square-foot house. It does not include their acquisition costs or demolition fees, does not state that they have already been given seventy thousand, and their listed expenses aren't complete, so their total project cost will go higher. All signs point to them coming back for more money because they don't know what they're doing. I think you should vote no. Item eighteen, you are demolishing three shotgun houses because of your failure to enforce housing code violations and tax foreclosures. So more of our historic houses that compromised historically black neighborhoods like Happy Hill are being erased, and more of the small housing stock, which is perfect for first-time home buyers, is being eliminated. Your actions are counterproductive, we need to rethink this. Item twenty-two, you are leasing a space downtown for well-below-market rate at the expense of every other citizen who must come up with the difference in their taxes and utility bills. If the idea of the Douglas Block is to allow small businesses to have an easy start with cheap rent, then when will their lease payments reach full market rate? At least have a clause in the contract that says if they won't reduce rates downtown, then they must agree to be open whenever the event center is hosting an event. It is no different than lease stipulations in a shopping mall requiring you to be open certain hours, and it's embarrassing when huge events go on and nothing is open downtown, and it has happened frequently. Item twenty-five, again, what's the logic of paying a hundred and forty-five thousand for a property that's only appraised for one thirty-five? The city should not be an ATM spending out an extra ten thousand dollars to the sellers. There is no bank in existence that would lend money over in appraised value. And I also want to add, the election has been certified, and I think that we should not wait till July eleventh to swear in Tom Harris for Ward Six. We should go ahead and swear him in, so he can vote on this budget that he's going to be working on and operating within for the next year. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Copeland. I'd like to invite Mr. Troy Davis to the podium. I'd like to invite Mr. Troy Davis to the podium.
Good evening. I don't know why everybody's up in arms about paying $10,000 more than a property. I had a doctor just pay me $40,000 more than a property in North Green Country Club, so it's normal. This is the market. This is what we're in nowadays. We created it, so we've got to live with it. But my major concern tonight is not about a lease on Main Street. It's a startup company. I think that's great that we can provide lower rates of rent. Obviously, the city got money from the government to create the Douglas Block, so keep up the good work there. But my concerns is about the pool, how the pool is closed for the summer. For the kids of this community, they have nowhere to go. We want to see crime reduce, but you're enabling these teens to go out encouraging them to break in cars, to ramshack houses, to steal guns because they have nothing else to do. And we need to relook at the Parks and Rec Department as a whole because Parks and Rec is closed when it's convenient for adults. It's closed when it's convenient, it's not open when it's convenient for kids. When you close an art museum at 5:00, when kids get out of school at 4:00, it's a problem. It's a problem that I see. We have to be more kid-friendly in this community. I think we also need to look at putting Wi-Fi throughout our entire downtown. You just go 20 miles down the street, Wilson, North Carolina, has free Wi-Fi for all its constituents throughout its entire downtown. It has a pool that is available at the YMCA that was brand new. It opens in about two months. Kids can spend $2 to get in the pool at the brand-new YMCA. But also, it's downtown, has electronic, electric vehicle charging stations. We're behind time. We are living behind a curve with bushes growing in front of us. We have to cut those bushes down and enable people to see us as a beautiful city of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. We need electronic vehicle charging stations throughout our city strategically placed, and I'm sick and tired of hearing about plans. Let's get it done. Knock the dust off those plans.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Dr. Kim, I'm sorry, Councilman Joyner.
Yes, we could get the city manager to say something about what we're trying to accommodate with the pool.
With the pools, we have made arrangements with the YMCA for use of their pool for summer camp activity. We had looked at trying to use the pool that's at the senior center. We do have a pool there, but it's not a, it does not have a shallow end to it, so it's not considered to be a safe place for kids to swim there because it does not have a zero depth end to it. But we do have an arrangement with the YMCA for summer camps at their pool.
Yes, Councilman Knight.
Mr. Barney, I read the letter or the memo that was sent to you from Parks and Rec. That was my first sign seeing the intensity of the work that needed to be done to the pool. And so, I don't, council don't get that type of information, and if so, we didn't see it. I think it goes to staff, and then staff will send it to the city manager, and they will come to us in the CIP and ask us for the money to put in the budget to repair the pool. So, again, that was a lack of maintenance. But just to, I know Mr. Davis well, and he's doing a great job, but just to say closing a pool is having young people to commit crime and to kill each other, I do disagree with that. I grew up here in Rocky Mountain, in Barry's Island. I couldn't even go to the pool, but it didn't have me to go and pick up a gun and shoot somebody. And so, we do offer a lot of programs in this city, and we could offer more, and you're right, you know, we could offer more. But some of the things that we do offer, our citizens need to take advantage of it. We have a lot of programs through other nonprofit organizations as well. So, I just want to say that it is, it was, it is a shame that the pool is in the condition that it's in. We have allocated the money to get the pool fixed, but I'm quite sure if the council knew the condition of the pool, that the pool would have been fixed before now. And so, I'm glad that our interim city manager did make an arrangement with the YMCA to have our citizens to be able to go to the pool so they can enjoy this summer. And yes, we do need another pool in a city of this size, and I would support that somewhere down the line. I just wanted to make those comments, and appreciate you, Mr. Davis, for bringing those points to us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. Anyone else? This time, I'd like to invite Dr. Kim Koo to the podium.
Good afternoon. Doing the same thing over and over again, but expecting a different result each time is just so much foolishness, if not insanity. If more law and order, more surveillance, and more lethal weapons have worked, we would have been the safest country in the world. Obviously, we are not. Instead, we have the highest gun homicide rates in the world, and nowhere is considered safe or sacred anymore, especially for people of color. Here in Rocky Mountain, we are in the budget planning season, and all I have heard so far is how much more money the city is putting into hiring more positions in the police department or spending more high-tech, more on high-tech surveillance equipment. Why are we not doing something different by putting money and resources to decreasing poverty in our communities, by hiring more people to improve city services, or being more proactive to better the education of the children, or being really aggressive in getting more affordable housing or improving neighborhood parks so children can use them safely and other measures of community development? All these would have been preferable than doing the same thing over and over again to address gun violence, which had not worked and will never work. Another problem I have is the budget proposal of raising 8.8% increase to retail or wholesale consumption rates of water and sewer. This increase will affect everyone living in the city equally, the rich and the poor. But we are not all equally rich, are we? This is a very unfair tax increase. Please consider removing it from your proposed budget. Instead, I propose that the increase should be in property taxes. In this way, the wealthier folks who own a lot more real estate property or very expensive homes will pay more, and poor people will not be burdened with tax increases. This is a far more equitable way to raise funds for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Arrington, it seems as though you're coming for a rezoning matter, so then we'll hold until the public hearing. Alpha J. Herring, I invite you to the podium.
Good evening, sir.
Evening.
I want to, from the outset, apologize. As I look at the agenda, I see other churches and entities have done in advance what I'm getting ready to ask of you on tonight, and that's just not knowing the process. But I am the pastor of Emmanuel Chapel, Regent of Freeville Baptist Church, located on 635 Henry Street, and we put on what we call the Hot Dogs on Henry Street yearly, and with COVID of the past couple of years, we've missed that, and we're desiring to start that back up this year. And our goal is to reach over 100, 150 members of the community connected then with resources that are local, as well as giving them a good hot dog. And we are asking the council to consider, again, at this late juncture, allowing us to close a block off the street at Henry and Raleigh, Henry Street and Raleigh Row, and Henry Street and Luther. There are actually about two, maybe three, empty churches next door to the church, excuse me, houses next door to the church, so the entire row of Henry and Luther will not need to be blocked off. We can actually come down further, allowing homeowners to still access their driveways. And I thank you in advance for this consideration.
Thank you, Pastor Herring. Is that something we can add to the agenda now, or is that something that, you know, that we need some recommendation from staff?
I think you can add it to the agenda. I think you can add it to the agenda now. I didn't get the date.
June 18th.
June 18th.
This Saturday.
Yeah, pretty much, if you're going to do it, pretty much need to do it now.
So, can we add that to the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilman Daughtry. I'll ask the clerk if there's not a need for discussion, to please call the roll if you'll vote, to add that to consent agenda tonight.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, the request to block off Henry Street on Saturday, June 18th, has been added to the consent agenda. This time, I'd like to invite Reverend Nehemiah Smith to the podium.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm probably going to make the understatement of the day or perhaps the year. It's hot. It's hot. And I've been getting some calls from city employees that work in public works, and they have been complaining about supervisors who have not been allowing them to take the proper breaks in this heat, and we need to look out for the welfare of our workers. It's hot outside, and I know that they do jobs that many of us think to be menial and that, you know, just going to be done anyway, but I would hate to have someone to have a heat stroke or, you know, to have a medical condition, and because we didn't allow the people to get the proper breaks that they needed because some supervisor wants to meet some quota, I think that we need to look at that, and I think that needs to be sent down from city management, telling them to allow these people to take the proper breaks because we don't want anybody to get, to get sick or to die. Also, I want to thank the Rocky Mountain PD for their quick response to my residence the other day. I had a gentleman who banged on my front door, left, thought no one was home, and decided that he was going to take my lawnmower to go and cut somebody else's grass, and then he said he would bring it back. Unbeknownst to him, I have a shotgun in every room, and when he came to take my lawnmower, I told him to get on his knees and pray. And the police department came, and they were able to make sure that he didn't take my lawnmower. So, thank you, Rocky Mountain Police Department. I also think that we need to have a strong letter of support for sensible gun legislation that comes from our city council. I know that Mount Zion First Baptist Church, where our pastor, we have put together a letter that all of my members are signing and sending to our congressional delegation to let them know that we want sensible gun legislation. So, I think the city, that would be a good idea for the city to do that, too. And last but not least, on June 21st, 24th, Friday, June 24th, Mount Zion First Baptist Church is having a jobs fair where we are bringing in a number of companies. They're coming in, and they are going to hire people on the spot. This will be our second time doing it this year. The first time, we had people to get hired, and I've been working with Pastor Joyner that we're going to be able to get those people that don't have transportation to work, we're going to be able to do that. We've been using our van to do it, but we're going to ask other churches if they would do that, too, to help these people along the way because people need to work, and believe it or not, people want to work. So, we are having that. We have a number of companies that are coming, and all of them have agreed that when they come, they're not just going to interview, they're going to hire on the spot. So, that's Friday, June 24th, and you'll be hearing those announcements on the radio. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. Dwight Silver to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, and Councilmen. Of course, my concern was, is when Barnhill did that expansion on Springfield Road, they left, there's a ditch down there right next to where the new health development is going to be, and right before that, they left a big gully right in front of one of the properties down there. And I wonder if they can come out and relook at that and see if they can fill it in or do something, because it's like a, it's like a big gully right in front of the property adjacent to Whibley Drive there, that's the new road that's going to come through there. And also, that ditch right there beside the property that I'm talking about, down Springfield Road, which they know of, when it rains, it fills up with a lot of water, lots of water. You just see it, water fills up there, and then the snakes, the snakes from that ditch just comes out of there. So, I want Barnhill to come out and take a look at that and see if they can, either put more piping in there, or put more dirt in there, fill that gully in, or just take a look at that and see what they can do with that.
Okay. Managers, is that something you think you can direct staff?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be looking at it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This time, I'd like to invite Brenda Cooper to the podium.
Good evening.
Evening.
I guess you probably see me many times, but I'm Brenda Cooper with South Rocky Mountain. I don't always say it because I have very...
Excuse me. Yeah. So that everybody can hear. There you go. Thank you, Kim.
Okay, I'm Brenda Cooper from South Rocky Mountain, and I come representing South Rocky Mountain. And I have one or maybe two here standing up with us. We have concerns about the things that's going on in our community or not happening. For one, I'm going to try to make it real quick. One thing is the difficulty in getting street-side pickups. It shouldn't have to take us calling council memos or department heads for them to do what they should do when it's already in line to do. We try to get everything out, and I try to encourage people in the neighborhood to make sure to get their street-side pickup out before Wednesday and make sure, and tell them to call in, and a lot of times, I just call and tell them there's something where they're at. Nobody likes to see a whole pile of trash sitting in front of the house all weekend, all week after week, and sometimes, they don't quite cover the neighborhood at all. So, we're seeing that. I appreciate the support for those who try to help us get this happening and making it happen. I appreciate that. Two, and I heard about the shortness and everything, so that's, I'm not saying that's not true, it's just the fact that we are concerned. We're concerned about landlords who don't care about where we live, don't care about how to look when they're putting things out after the people have came and cleaned up our streets, and the landlords come and just dump stuff out on the side of the road as if it just didn't matter. It didn't matter to them, but it doesn't matter to us because we're the ones having to deal with the rubbish they put out there. These I call is, the houses that they have there, and most of us know the people that are doing this, the landlords that are doing this, they seem not to care about the fact that we're here, and they just let somebody move in, get the money, and don't do anything to the property to make it look better or keep it right, better. They just put the stuff out there and put the people out the door, put the trash out the doors out the road, and move somebody right back in behind it. It's just really not a good thing, and it seems like they don't care. And I've actually spoke to one recently, and I asked them, I said, "You don't live here, and I know this doesn't matter to you, but it matters to us. Don't, our trash pickup, and I get the date, you need to have your stuff out before then and make sure you call in." So, we try to accommodate what we know the city is trying to do, but sometime, these landlords feel like that they have the city in their pocket, and that's what it seems like they think, and I sure hope they don't. The other thing is, there's, sometime, I know the laws are, I don't know if there's any laws about vagrancy or community nuisance properties, and I don't know quite what the word to put for it, but when properties are sitting there and they are letting people just, all kinds of people come in, they don't care what they do, they can make, okay, time's gone. They make a lot of arguments.
If you can send us your written comments, we can distribute that amongst the council.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
South Rocky Mountain is still fighting on.
Okay, I want to ask if Crystal Williams Anderson is in the chamber? Okay. That being said, brings us to item number eight, which is the consent agenda, which includes temporary street closures listed and the one we've added tonight. Consideration of requests from Brianna Hodge on behalf of Emmanuel Tabernacle Ministries to close Boone Street, that's item two on that. Item B, it's consideration of the following requests for firework displays at City Rocky Mountain at 550 Independence Drive on July 1, Rise Church at 3520 Bishop Road on July 2, Eaglewood Baptist Church on Church Property on South Winston Avenue on July 4. on July 2, Inglewood Baptist Church on Church Property on South Winston Avenue on July 4. Item C is consideration of the following ordinance amendments. Project Ordinance Amendment reduces budget appropriations relative to economic development, project boulevard by 200,000, and the Budget Ordinance Amendment as listed. Item D is consideration of application of one new taxi ride license for Gerald Burney. And then we added an item E, which is the repeal of the, I'm going to get it wrong, Mr. Varnie.
Bars, taverns, and nightclubs.
Bars, taverns, and nightclubs ordinance. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is her second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker. Is there a need for discussion? Yes.
I do have some concerns.
Councilwoman Miller, yes, ma'am.
The ordinance that we've had in effect regarding nightclubs and bars and so forth has been very effective in keeping down the violence. We are living in a time that is even more violence prone than at the time that ordinance was put in place. I understand that is, quote, burdensome to the nightclub owners to supply the information on the managers as they turn over. But not having that in place, I think, leaves the city more vulnerable than it has been with that ordinance in effect. My comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. Councilman Daltrich.
Mr. Mayor, can we get clarification on that? Because I thought we were just striking a couple of things out of the bars and taverns. Ordinance was my understanding that was presented to us at the committee, the whole, in our packet, but not striking the whole piece, or my understanding is something incorrectly.
Well, that's the way I understand it as well. I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's, that one piece was a change that was being eliminated, not the whole ordinance.
Councilman Walker, do you care to adjust that? And perhaps I got it wrong when I made the, you know, the request to add it to the consent agenda.
Yeah, you know, I think you stated it correct, but it is to eliminate the whole ordinance as a whole. And I'm sorry, Councilman Daltrich, there was some misunderstanding in our conversation with, I know it was brief.
So, yes.
So, I have my hand raised, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Councilman Blackwell. It's not as easy for me to see from this angle, so.
I know it is. That's okay. And thank you so much for accommodating my inconvenience tonight. I appreciate being included. I support the removal of the entire ordinance. We did several years ago, take a move to create another layer of scrutiny and responsibility on the part of the owners of bars and taverns, because at that time, we felt that there was not as appropriate attention to leadership and management. But when I look over the last years, especially in this last spate of violence that we've had, the violence is not coming from bar owners or employees. And I think that, to a T, every person that I've talked with that has had to go through this process, first of all, they're just rehearsing what the state general statute says. When you go through the training, you're hearing the same thing that ALE and the ABC Commission tell you and instruct you. But this ordinance, as it is, creates burden on the bar and tavern owners to do background checks, fingerprints, not only for the management, but for all the employees who work there. And in this day and age, you know, the city moved several years ago to eliminate, you know, if the person has a justice involved background, we've eliminated that even in City of Rocky Mount hiring. And the whole nation is moving towards creating opportunity for all people for employment. And from where I'm sitting, it just seems to me to have another unnecessary burden, and it's not necessarily holding, it's not doing anything other than creating some fee strain for the city. And another level of administration for folks who are really struggling in tight market times. So, I'm in favor of abolishing the whole thing altogether, and let's put our attention where it really needs to go, which is building up communities, affordable housing, youth programming, in places of more strategic law enforcement efforts that target folks who really are the folks that are creating the problems. Thank you.
Councilman Daltrich.
I think my concern, but I need clarification, and my concern could be eliminated. In Section 13306, revocation or suspension of bars, taverns, and nightclubs, would that also be applicable somewhere within our code if you have a nuisance within a business that could, the police, along with city council, could possibly have some sort of enforcement? And that's where, or, that's my concern, because if you do have an establishment that is a habitual problem to the city, I think we need to have recourse. And if that's somewhere within the code, then somewhere else, and I'm happy. But if not, then I do have concerns. And I was not aware, I was just going by with what was handed to us prior to this meeting. It was delivered on Friday.
Do we know if that's in the ordinance anywhere? Nuisance of any business somewhere within the ordinances that we have enforcement?
I don't know.
Okay. I tell you what, if it would please counsel, if it would please counsel, what I would like to do is propose that we vote on the consent agenda, A through D as listed, and pull this out for conversation. Yes, or Councilman Knight?
A comment. A question was asked, the whole, to the chief, if it's a property, not just a business, a bar, tavern, or nightclub, even if it's a house, it's a nuisance in a community that it can be addressed. So, that is already, can be enforced. It has nothing to do with the BTN. The BTN was created, I think, for chief. It's just another layer of bureaucracy that you put owners through. And the owners have stated that the BTN is unconstitutional when you look at it. And so, I'm in favor. We had a motion on the floor in a second, and the discussion to call for the question, either voted up or down. But we have, I think someone asked the chief, the chief is here. Why don't we ask the chief? If so, if, I forgot who asked the question.
Nusancabasement.
Chief, is that correct?
Yes, sir. That should be ordinance, I don't know, but typical ordinance that they are governed nuisance in the basement, but that should apply to multiple types of locations. But it's not different.
Right. So, that's, that has nothing to do with the BTN, because it's any, from what I'm, why I'm standing.
The question has been called, so we're going to vote. I'll ask clerk, yes.
This needs to be off the consent agenda, because it has, it's obviously not going to be done by consent.
Right. So, we're voting here on A, B, C, and D, and that includes the additional street closure for the consent agenda. We're pulling out this other item that we'll vote, since the question has been called for. We'll just have to repose it and vote on it in that way, if that's okay with you, Councilman Knight.
Well, I guess if it's on the floor, according to Robert Russo's order, we just go-
Well, we don't have total consent, I think is really the point, but I'll defer, too.
You can't do it on the consent agenda, because there's not consent. You've got to handle the consent agenda and then handle this matter separately.
So, what we do is, the question's been called, so we vote on that, then we vote on the consent agenda. Is that correct?
We can do that, consent. I would-
It needs to come off the consent agenda, because it's on the consent agenda where the question was called. So, let's, the question's called really on the consent agenda, so let's vote on that.
I think it would be cleaner if we did repose the question. So-
Clarification, clarification. Are we voting on the entire consent agenda with, what, how does that handle the request to change in the BTN?
So, we are voting on consent agenda excluding the request-
Thank you.
And then we'll, we'll have that, may as another motion, and vote that up or down either way. So, at this point in time, I'm calling for the consent agenda, which is absent of the BTN. I have a motion by Councilman, but who was, who's the first? You give me Knight, and then second by Joyner. Is there a need for further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk, please call the roll. If you'll vote, your name is called.
Councilmember Knight.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Joyner.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Daltrich.
Yes.
Bullock. Miller.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes. We have another motion on the floor, which is to eliminate or strike the BTN ordinance as we know it today. I'd like to ask for another, you know, motion and a second on that, just-
So moved.
And the motion is to repeal that ordinance, I think, is what they're doing.
I'm sorry. Motion was made by Joyner, second by Walker, and Blackwell.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilman Daltrich.
I would like to ask the city attorney to confirm or at least be in agreement with what the police chief said about nuisance in the basement.
The council has authority, and there's a city code provision on it to abate nuisance.
So, so-
All authority to abate nuisances. This was more focused just on the nightclub.
I understand. So, to the answer to my original question is, we do have another avenue as a city to address any nuisances that we deem that is a nuisance to the city.
Yes, yes, you thought.
We could have avoided this all along if I had had my question answered earlier.
Sorry about that, Councilman Daltrich. Just trying to move the meeting along. Apologize for that. So, I have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll. If you'll vote, your name is called. That's for the repeal of BTN, the ordinance as is written on our books today.
Councilmember Knight.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Joyner.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Daltrich.
Yes.
Bullock. Miller.
Yes, with great reservation. Thank you.
BTN has been rescinded. That opens up to item number nine on our agenda, which is a public hearing relative to the proposed budget of fiscal year 2022 and 2023. At this time, I'll receive, we will receive public comment. If you want to speak on the particular matter of our current budget as proposed, please come to the podium. And if you would, line up thereafter. Ken, do you want to give us a little bit of a?
Yeah. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and good evening. This is a, the purpose of my brief introduction is to just go over revisions to the proposed budget that were presented to council during their last work session on June 6.
Great.
So, this is all I'm going to be doing. With respect, and I, give me just a second. With respect to the budget, there were two changes that we made. First, with respect to the general fund, we did, we did adjust the proposal by $60,300 in positive, and this was to reflect additional expenditures that were, that were requested by council. So, the revised fiscal year 2023 proposed general fund budget is $83,000, $83,379,050. The emergency telephone fund, which covers certain cost of operations for our Enon Women Dispatch Center, that has been reduced by $80,000 from $330,000 to $250,000. So, the total revised fiscal year 2023 proposed budget for the eight annual operating funds that are included is $238,732,110. There is no property tax increase being proposed. There is the proposed increase of retail and resale water and sewer usage by 8.8%. And there is also the changes, the annual adjustments for inflation due to the solid waste contract for the operations of the transfer station.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Any questions for Mr. Hunter? If not, I'll open up the public hearing. Please come forward.
So, in this budget, great leaders lead by example. They set a good example for others to follow. This budget with excessive spending sends a terrible message of fiscal irresponsibility and betrays a lack of executive competence. There is no message of saving only spending. There is no responsibility to be found, only blind mismanagement. You are setting an example and a precedent that is disastrous. This budget pushes the limits of spending to get everything on your wish list. You go right up to the limit of what you can afford, and then you just raise rates on utility customers when you want to spend more than you earn. The city is not a Santa Claus to give you everything you want, and it's not a magic ATM to bail anyone out of their problems. This is a horrible budget, and it has gone drastically worse with an 83% increase in administrative service fees from last year. And now with inflation at record levels, gas and grocery prices rising every day, you want to keep spending. Like Councilman Walker has said several times, you need a serious plan, because your decisions make no sense. They counteract each other, and they're digging us into a hole, one that we need to get out of while we still can. I know it's easy to spend other people's money and grant everyone their wishes, but those are the actions of people who don't know the first thing about running a business and know running a nonprofit doesn't compare in the least, because they aren't supposed to make money. They just spend other people's money. The city has a duty to its citizens, not your egos and your reelections. Vote no on this budget and fix it.
Thank you. Is there anyone here else to speak on the proposed budget for 2022 and 2023?
I, my name is Dr. Koo, and I spoke earlier about my disagreement, but I wanted to add another thing, given what the previous person was saying. I completely disagree with her. The reason is because I feel that using fiscal responsibility as a bludgeon in order to limit spending is just going to hurt citizens. This is all our tax money, all right? It's the same kind of logic that they use for what they call readjustment on third world countries that prevent the citizens, the governments of these countries to spend on pub, to increase public spending. And as a result, public education, healthcare, and everything went down the tubes for a lot of these people. And now, with inflation, a lot of black and brown people all over the world are suffering. So, I oppose this whole concept of quote unquote, using fiscal responsibility to bludgeon people and prevent further spending on what we need for public services. And we need more spending so that people can feel safe, people can feel they have confidence, and people feel that the city is really doing what it needs to do for its citizens, just as our country has failed us with all its public problems.
Thank you. Is anyone else here to speak on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2022 and 2023? Seeing none, hearing none, I will close the public hearing at this particular point in time. Moving us on to item number 10 on our agenda, which is consideration of the minutes and recommendations from a planning board meeting, which was held on May 10, 2022, overview of the requests and recommendations by the Director of Development Services or his designee. At this point in time, we're looking to acknowledge receipt of the planning board minutes. Is there somebody from staff who wants to go over that, or are we, are we comfortable? I'll accept the motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Daltrich, now seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Knight.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Joyner.
Yes.
Walker. Daltrich.
Yes.
Bullock. Miller.
Yes.
Okay. At this point in time, I'll open the public hearing relative to the following rezoning requests recommended for approval and found in compliance with the comprehensive plan by the planning board. And that is a request by Jovan Dowdy on behalf of Transformational Professionals LLC for modification of an existing conditional district rezoning for plus or minus 2.83 acres at 447 South Wesleyan Boulevard from B5CD to B5CD revised. At this point in time, we will receive any public comment, but if there's somebody from staff who would like to come and give us an overview, that would be helpful.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This request here is B5CD, B5CD, the revised condition. So, at one point in time, the original condition of this property was that there'd be limited access to this property from the existing crossovers on Wesleyan. The applicant did reach out to NC DOT. NC DOT did grant access to a driveway at that location. So, taking that request out, adding in a 50-foot cross-access easement to the front, because this property, to the north there, there is a existing drive to locations to the north in the existing zoning district there. So, the 50-foot cross-access easement will be provided to adjacent property to the north and south. They indicated they would like to put a fence up for the time being. to put a fence up for the time being, and any fence erected shall be removed as property to the south side is developed due to the nature of the operation they have there. Staff recommended approval of this request, and planning board recommended approval unanimously in this case. I do not see the applicant, so I don't know. I don't believe he's here tonight.
All right. Are there any questions? Does matter? All right, this time, at this time, we'll receive any public comment. Is anybody here to speak on this particular rezoning request? Seeing none, hearing none, look for a motion to adopt the ordinance limiting the land development code and map as it relates to item A.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Daltrich, seconded by Councilman Blackwell, was it? Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk, if you'll please call the roll. If you'll vote as your name is called.
Councilmember Knight.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Joyner.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Daltrich.
Yes.
Bullock. Miller.
Yes.
Item passes. At this point in time, we'll open a public hearing relative to the following rezoning requests recommended for approval and found in compliance with the comprehensive plan by the planning board. It's a request by Jeffrey C. Moore to rezone plus or minus seventeen point six four acres at Woodbury Drive off Springfield Road from R15 to R6. If you could please go over the specifications of the project, that would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. So take a look at the map there. Property in question, seventeen point six four acres, currently R15. To the north is R15. Immediately to the south is the, the R6. You kind of see the clustering of cul-de-sacs to get an idea of what potential could be. So DOT is requesting that the applicant with plans get a, can connect the drive there on Springfield. A TIA would be required if the plan exceeds a thousand additional trips per day or a thousand new peak hour trips per day. The applicant is here to answer any other questions you may have. I do know that they had a neighborhood meeting. Staff recommends approval of this, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously at their meeting.
Are there any questions from council? Yes, Councilman Joyner.
I did hear you say that they. That they do have community meetings?
Yes, and they're here tonight to, to answer any questions you may have.
Councilman Knight, do you have a question?
Yes, I know it was one particular residence that lived on the street that the development is going to be built behind. I'm quite, I want to know, did the developers talk with that, Ms. Walker? I don't know if you know the Ms. Walker. She had a concern about water runoff.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't see Ms. Walker.
Well, then please come forward. We'll open up the public hearing this time, and then we'll ask specific questions of the landlord afterwards. That.
Good evening, council. I'm Sheila Ely. I've been living in the neighborhood for over 30 years, and we have had neighborhood meetings regarding this development. And we have expressed that we are vehemently opposed to the connection of this new development into Hunting Lodge Drive. As you mentioned earlier, there'd be about a thousand, I think, traffic coming to Springfield. Well, if you connect to Hunting Lodge Drive, that traffic could potentially affect our neighborhood. In fact, I have letters from neighbors, I have four page, pages of petitions signed by our neighbors, all concerned about the traffic flow. Barring our neighborhood, we are a quiet neighborhood, well-established. Like I said, I've been here 30 years. We have older ones who live in the neighborhood, very concerned about the traffic flow, having a hard time reading this mask, with the traffic flow coming through Hunting Lodge Drive. So we would request that if the zoning is approved, that he not be connected to Hunting Lodge Drive, also that a barrier or a fence will be created to create a division between our neighborhood and the new development.
Thank you. Is anybody else, or Councilman Knight, you have a question?
To the developer, hearing the request or the concern, could this development be done without connecting to Huntington Lodge? Is it another access that you can?
Yes, sir. And good evening, by the way, Mr. Mayor and council members. Absolutely. So we working with Matt Gay and Associates, and as mentioned in the planning and zoning meeting as well. Absolutely. The only concern that they seem to have was the emergency access to be able to get in and out of the neighborhood. But as I mentioned to Ms. Ely, and I mentioned at that time, that we're not opposed to, you know, obviously a cul-de-sac that would run in and out of the neighborhood if the council would, would see fit.
I'm the council member that wore, and I asked if, if you, the developer, can get with the engineer nears, and once they figure that part out about connecting to Huntington Lodge.
Yes.
Then have another meeting with the neighborhood association, or just the neighbors of the residents on, in that area on Huntington Lodge, and then we can make sure that we're all on the same page.
Absolutely. We can absolutely do that.
Okay.
Do we want to make a motion tonight to adopt the ordinance pending, conditioned upon?
Make that a condition upon once we.
And also, and also regarding the fence, the, I have, like I said, the petition signed and even received a text message from a neighbor on Falcon Road to ensure that there is some type of fencing or barrier coming up against the neighbors that are all alongside that road, because this new development will be right behind them, and they are concerned. Wally Cove, when it was built, the developer was willing to put up a fence as a barrier between Wally Cove and our neighborhood. This one is going to be even closer. So we would ask that a barrier or some type of fence, or I don't know if it's hedges or whatever, be created between the two neighborhoods so that they are distinct neighborhoods as well.
Thank you. Sir, if you'd like to speak, please come to the podium.
Members of the council, my name is David Hale. I live at 101 Hunting Lodge Drive. I'm the yellow square in the middle of the new zoning district. And so my question is, my, my house and my property is currently zoned R15, but when the R6 zone is put in like what you see to the south, I'm not sure how that guarantees my R15 or my low density. So I have some concerns there. Furthermore, I know that there was a newsletter brought out to the, to the neighborhood about these meetings. The letter arrived to me the night of the meeting, and I check my mail at nine when I get home from work, so I was unable to attend. So I, I have a peculiar interest in this rezoning. I'd also like to express that I am willing to negotiate, you know, even a sale of my property to facilitate this, this development. I'm not really extremely interested in interfering with public property rights, but I haven't had a chance to communicate with developers. So I'd communicate that to you as well. So that's what I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Is somebody else from the public here to speak? I would propose that we close the hearing until the developer and individuals can, can come back with a proposed plan unless council has a different approach.
I think the developers say he'd be willing to get back with the citizens in that area to address some of the, the concerns and, and to address the conditions.
Yeah, my question for the council would be absolutely, we can do that, and we'll sit down with Matt Gay and Associates to do that. However, I want to make sure if that's the only thing that's of concern, then is there any way we could get approval to move forward contingent upon being able to, to speak to that portion as it relates to the cul-de-sac in or out?
I would, you know, for my support, and I know we need housing, I would feel comfortable if you would get back with them first.
Okay.
To make sure that those conditions are put in. And I, I wish that would have happened with the staff, and then probably if that would have been worked out, it wouldn't have been any reason not to support it. But seeing that we have some concerns, I would rather to have the concerns addressed and those conditions put in place, and then bring it back to the council, and then we go from there.
Okay, we can certainly, we can certainly do that.
Close the public hearing. Brings us to item number 11, another public hearing that I'm opening, relative to the following rezoning requests recommended for approval and found in compliance with the comprehensive plan by the planning board in its March 8th, 2022 meeting, request by Metu Reddy on behalf of Spark Heights LLC to rezone 111, I mean, 1119 Stonewall Drive from R10 to R6 MFA. At this time, if we have staff, thank you, to come and give us an overview, and then we'll open to public hearing, public comment.
Okay, thank you again. This rezoning request went to planning board a few months ago. It's not here before you until tonight because the legal description needed to be complete before we brought it to your attention. The request is R10 to R6 MFA of this lot here. I believe the next slide will kind of illustrate potential constraints based on the flood hazard area, but property could still be developed if it meets the floodplain development regulations we have. Total property is 4.17 acres. Staff and planning board were unanimous in their approval at the time.
Any questions? Councilman Blackwell or Councilwoman Miller?
Yes, I, I do have a question. Thank you. So the, it seems that, you know, the, the lot that's in question, the concern that I have with it is that, first of all, it is an oddly shaped lot with a large portion of the lot being in the floodplain. And then the second thing that I'm concerned about is that it is juxtaposition in between two single-family homes in a neighborhood where there are only single-family homes. And, and it seems to me that this is an odd configuration of an apartment complex in the middle of a number of single-family homes. I'm also concerned about traffic patterns and the impact of traffic. We're, we're shifting around traffic patterns on River Falls, I'm sorry, not River Falls, on Peachtree Street. And I, I'm concerned about the addition of a number of folks who live in there, in addition to a larger development that's in that same area. And as such, I'm going to just tell everybody upfront, I really do not support this at all. And, you know, I'd like to hear from the folks who live there, and I'd like to also understand why the staff feels this is a good fit for this community.
Why don't we start with that?
Mayor.
And then, yes, Councilwoman Miller.
I share Councilmember Blackwell's concerns on all counts with regard to the flooding and the traffic patterns and the move to develop property that is not in the best interest of the environment. Thank you.
Good, okay, yep. So we do have, obviously, you, you see what's there, but there are floodplain regulations in place. We have not seen a formal proposal or development plan. And what you're, I think what you're starting to see now in Rocky Mount is some of these constrained lots based on development. You're starting to see a little bit more of this. So people are trying to get a little bit more creative of what they have. Preference for higher-density development is typically closer to a street proposed. You would, in my opinion, would not want to initiate high-density development through or towards the back end of an existing subdivision. So this has access to, it has not been developed more likely because the odd shape may have to go through some iterations of site plan, subdivision review, potential variances, that sort of thing, to actually accomplish this. So I don't know how feasible it may be, but the Mills property is, is another example, located in the floodway, mixed-use development, high-density residential units as well in, in proximity. So again, this is just a request at this time, and look forward to hearing any comments and seeing what direction we go.
Is there anybody here from the public who would wish to speak on this particular matter? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Tony Foot, and I'm a property owner in the River Falls at Stonewall Subdivision. I, and I am speaking for the Community Homeowners Association and Residents, back here. Mayor, council members, Mr. Varney, Mr. Rose, thank you for allowing me to speak. We oppose this rezoning request to the property in our subdivision for the following reasons. First, the zoning request was started without consideration or consultation with the property owners of the subdivision. The only owners who were noticed via mail were the two homeowners that share a property line with the subject property. This is a serious increase in density where cooperation within the subdivision should be sought. We disagree with the planning board's conclusion that the rezoning will have minimal to no negative impact on the area. The current traffic flow from the subdivision through Stonewall Lane is already congested during the busy times of day. The addition of multifamily units will make exit more difficult, particularly along the Benvenue corridor door leading to downtown Rocky Mount. Additional traffic controls will most definitely be required. We also fear that the high-density and access problems will have a negative impact on our property values and markability. The owners in Stonewall purchased their properties with the understanding that the community would consist solely of single-family detached owns. This midstream changes contrary to all previous plans and representations. The logic of locating high-density residential apartments directly in the midst of a low-density, single-family development is contrary to common sense and good city planning. This density is more appropriately located in a transition area between mixed-use locations like O and I or Mercantile and near higher-density, single-family locations. We have circulated a resolution opposing the rezoning request among our property owners, has received 41 signatures, virtually the entirety of our property owners in our community. In closing, please do not approve the high density in our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening.
Can we get a copy of the resolution? Is there any other member of the public here to speak on this particular matter? Yes, please.
Good evening.
Evening.
Well, I'm the developer. I'm Metu Reddy, Director of Spark Heights LLC. Yeah, I fear Mr. Tony Foot elaborate on the, the conditions or the concerns that they have. I, I just want to start off by saying that we have additional property that's, that falls, that has an ingress and a egress that, from the Falling River subdivision. It's, it's, it's about 44 acres of, of land in the back of the subdivision that, that are all single-family. But this particular portion of the site that you're looking at, the ingress and the egress of that would be on Stonewall Drive. It would not even enter into the subdivision lot. It's on a corner lot that's on Peachtree Street and Stonewall Drive. And I think the, the regulations call for like a, a maximum of 99 units, but I've, I've had a meeting with HOA, and I think about seven or eight members of, have attended in, I think, May 10th. I've listened to their concerns, you know, and, you know, the idea is to, to basically use the land that we have in a spot where you have access to the best restaurants, the best parks, the walkway, and all those natural elements do fit into it where it could be a good property. We are looking at a $15 million investment that's going to enhance the value of that and in no way going to reduce it. I mean, with regards to the traffic patterns, I'm, I'm no expert in that, but I don't think that we would have all the people in the multifamily unit go out at the same time. What we are looking for is a multi-generational spaces that accommodates, you know, like, single-family to somebody who's like in a retirement stage or semi-retired, want to just get away from handling the. handling the chores of managing a single-family home and live in a like nice condo units that have access to the best restaurants, take a walk, you know, ride your bike or run through the cycle. So I think, again, we haven't gone through the planning cycle to hear some of these concerns to address these. So I would request that we go to a stage that would allow us to present a plan that the architects have designed to address some of these concerns. Thank you.
So are you withdrawing the request tonight?
No, I.
For rezoning? No?
No. We still want to move forward with it. It's just that we'll address this once because we haven't produced any site plans to fair. And we do take all these into consideration and not use the maximum land that, you know, we still are in the neighborhood. We still have other land. So we want to be good neighbors, make it a more cohesive project that's going to be a good for Rocky Mount.
Any questions for Mr. Reddy? Thank you. Anybody else here from the public who wishes to speak? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Looking for a motion to. Yes, Councilperson Miller?
Do not intend to make a motion.
I'm sorry, I didn't really hear you, Mayor, but if you're entertaining a motion.
No, no. Well, that's where we are. Would you like to make a motion to reject it?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to deny this request.
I second.
I have a motion by Councilperson, Councilman Blackwell to deny the motion. I have a second by Councilperson Miller. Is there any need for further discussion? Yes, sir. Councilman Walker?
I think what will help us, and I think I said this last meeting, but if we could develop some type of more aggressive communication approach to constituents when we're looking at a lot of these projects, because I think this is our fifth project that we've seen from developers over the last couple of weeks. And I think if we can just have a more aggressive approach with staff approaching constituents early on in the process, it may help us a lot because, I mean, we continue to do this. We're trying to grow, we're trying to develop, we're trying to have more housing, but at the same token, we're rejecting a lot of rezoning requests. So I think, Mr. Varney, if we could just look at our approach of how we're communicating with constituents, because times are changing, these are new developments, it's new time, and we've got to have, you know, constituents to some level of comfortability. So I think if we can have some more aggressive, or take a more aggressive approach with how we're communicating, it may help get some more constituent buy-in.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilperson Miller?
I appreciate Councilmember Walker's interest in peacemaking and moving forward. The communication, I think, may need to be an education issue with regard to staff and their understanding of environmental issues and our concern about environmental issues, particularly with regard to flooding.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to echo what Councilman Walker said, but add to it. And I think we need to expand, we go to adjacent property owners. And I think we need to expand that because in recent weeks, recent meetings, it's been, like the one gentleman mentioned earlier, he works a job and didn't get home until nine o'clock and didn't have something in his mailbox until the night of the meeting. But also, the impact of traffic and so forth is concern to entire neighborhoods. So I think it would be, we need to go beyond what we require and send letters out to, you know, whether that's a half mile or a mile, I don't know what it is. I leave that up to you, Intermanager Varney, but I think we need to go beyond just adjacent property owners.
Councilman Knight? Yes, sir.
Times are erected, they are put around in the area where the rezonings are being requested, correct? Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions?
Yes, yes, sir.
Councilman Blackwell? Yes, sir.
Thank you. What I would, what I do feel, I agree with some of what I've heard. I apologize in the hospital with my mom, so I can't hear everything too clearly. But the gist of the conversation is about needing to identify appropriate properties throughout the entire city where we can have affordable or some vision of market rate housing that's more dense than the neighborhoods they're located in. I think we need to plan proactively by community, by neighborhood, so that people have a voice in how their neighborhood changes. Otherwise, I believe we will end up just like Raleigh, just like Durham, just like every other metropolis where every square inch of land is developed to the hilt so that, you know, folks can get the maximum amount of return out of their investment, which I do understand that. But that should, investment, making money should not drive Rocky Mount's vision of who we are and how we build ourselves. Nor do I think that only in low or marginalized communities where people do not have a lot of wealth should we stack and pack all affordable housing projects. But I do believe that what we got to do is a better job of planning, looking at available land and places throughout every ward throughout our entire city that says that these are suitable places for development. These are the types of development that are eagerly accepted by the community. And if we find that there are communities who don't want certain kind of folks living there, then we got to deal with that, too. You know, I do feel that we are probably at that juncture. And it sort of ties into what I think Councilman Walker has talked about earlier, which I've been lukewarm on, but in this application, I do feel like a review of our comprehensive land planning is very much needed.
Thank you, Councilman Blackwell. I'm sorry to hear that your mother's in the hospital, and she's in our prayers and thoughts.
Thank you so much.
I do have a motion on the floor to deny the zoning request for Stonewall Lane from R10 to R6 MFA. We've had discussion at this point in time. I'd like to call a question. I'll ask City Clerk, please call the roll if you'll vote when your name is called.
Councilmember Knight? Blackwell?
Yes.
Joiner?
Yes.
Walker? Daltrich?
Yes.
Bullock? Miller?
No.
No. Okay. Well, rezoning has been denied. Move on to item number 12, this is public hearing. Public hearing, consideration of the 2022 Annual Action Plan for the Down East Home Consortium.
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't think she quite understood.
She did, I know, but it carried, so that's kind of.
You are correct. I was voting, and so the motion was approved, and that's my voting no. I do vote yes on rejecting.
Okay.
To let the record reflect that.
All right. That brings us to item number 12, Public Hearing, Consideration of the 2022 Annual Action Plan for the Down East Home Consortium Required for Eligibility in the Home Partnership Investment Funds and CDBG Entitlement Allocation. This time, I'd like to receive, I'll offer any public comment. If anybody's here to speak on this particular matter, I'd love to have you address this from the podium. Is there anyone here to speak on the matter of the 2022 Annual Action Plan for the Down East Home Consortium? Hearing none, seeing none, I'd like to request that we approve the plan and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any required documentations and certifications. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Second by Councilman Walker. Second by Councilman Joiner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask City Clerk, please call the roll if you'll vote when your name is called.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joiner?
Yes.
Walker? Daltrich?
Yes.
Bullock? Miller?
Yes.
Item passes. Item number 13, is Public Hearing, Consideration of Proposed CARE Act Amendment. At this point in time, I'd like to open up the public hearing and invite anybody from the public who's here to speak on the proposed CARE Act amendment. Please come forward and speak at the podium.
I would just like to point out the irony that in this CARES Act, you are redirecting funds away from the utility assistance program while simultaneously raising everyone's utility rates.
Anybody else from the public here to speak? Hearing none, I'll receive a motion to approve the plan, authorize the. Motion made by Councilman Joiner, is there a second? Second made by Councilman Knight. Is there a need for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll if you'll vote as your name is called.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joiner?
Yes.
Walker? Daltrich?
Yes.
Bullock? Miller?
Yes.
Item passes. Brings us to item number 14, which is Consideration of the Following Rezoning Request Recommended for Approval and Found in Compliance with the Comprehensive Plan by the Planning Board at a Meeting Held on February 8, 2022. Request by Rod Holloman on behalf of Gold Rock Road LLC to rezone plus or minus 27.42 acres at 601, 635, and 657 Gold Rock Road from A1 to revised R6 MFA. Action is a date, the public hearing has been held, no action was taken. On May 9, we received public comment, no action was taken. At this time, I'll open the floor for anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, we are opposed, and y'all have the petition that we originally, a lot of those people were not able to come, they had pre-engagements, they were not able to be here, but I think we have six or seven people here tonight. The Rocky Mount Telegram, I'm just going to repeat what I had said before. The Rocky Mount Telegram reported on December 8, 2020, that there had been 21 accidents on Gold Rock Road since 2015. 10 deaths, one was a longtime neighbor, 10 with injuries, nine with property damage. There have been plenty more since 2020. The center turn lane is used as a high-speed passive lane. We all use the center lane to turn into our homes and streets. This illegal use of the turning lane puts us all into a life-or-death situation. The city of Rocky Mount and the North Carolina Department of Transportation know there is a dangerous situation on Gold Rock Road. We do not need any more multifamily homes built. It will add additional traffic in an already dangerous area. Also, Gary Puckett has had three wrecks in his yard this year. Janelle House, who lives right on Gold Rock Road, which joins this property across the road from it, had to wait for 27 cars to go by before she could even get out on Gold Rock Road. Plus, it's, the main issue, too, is an environmental issue, and Gary Puckett can go into more detail about that.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak? Yes, sir, please. Okay.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Carolyn Freer Arrington. I have property on Freer Drive, which is off Gold Rock Road. My mother lives on Freer Drive still, and I have a lot of other family members that lived on, that lives on Freer Drive. My concerns are the runoff to Freer Drive. Freer Drive is already close to a very flood zone. My second concern is the increase of traffic to an already very busy Freer Drive that comes off of Gold Rock Road. They use Freer Drive as a shortcut, go into other parts of the area. I also have a concern about the value or the devalue, devalue of the property. Will the multifamily units be rented, or will they be purchased? My last concern is the increase in crime in the area with more multifamily units. I oppose the Gold Rock rezoning project. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, y'all know this is our fourth time coming here, talking about this, and I know you're tired of hearing it, but I tell you what, we got a lot of concerns. As Mr. Joiner said, I've had three wrecks in my front yard in the last year. And I don't know who said it last couple of meetings, but they said that they've got a sensor that tells if people have insurance. So let me tell you something. A lot of people don't have insurance and have accidents, I can tell you that. They don't pay for nothing. But, and a lot of people don't realize that floods are not covered by homeowner's insurance. Homeowner's insurance don't cover flooding. This particular property, which I don't see upon the screen up there, is right next to a flood zone, big time. And it's right behind my house is a flood zone. I was going to show you some stuff on the map up there if he gets it pulled up. But right behind my house, the sea level is at 96.5 feet. Where they're talking about this proposed development, the sea level at that creek area or the flood zone is at 93.1. So between my house and this proposed area, it's three foot of change. That three foot of change has eroded those banks where, where we have, can you pull up the flood? Where we have a lot of erosion. That erosion washed out a tree. The tree fell across Highway 48 and Gold Rock Road. It didn't, it didn't die because of old age. It actually washed out. It actually washed out. And last time I was here, I talked about them building a sewer line in, what, 1992 or '93? When they built the sewer line, they put in a 22-inch pipe so they could maintain this sewer line. And since they have built Northside Church and the Madison Place Apartments and Beaver Pond Roads was completed, Sparrow Hawk Road and all that was completed. The water that is coming into Hornbeam Branch from that area is what is washing out this stuff. It washed out that 22-inch pipe. That's how bad this water is coming off of that area with retention ponds. All that new development has retention ponds. Definitely not working. Yesterday afternoon, we got an inch and four tenths of rain. And I've got a video of how that creek was dry behind my house. It was raging at one inch and four tenths. Wait till we get a tropical storm or hurricane. Very bad situation. In this particular property, I just want to show you the changes that we got here. This right here is the creek that runs right down through here. This property, I would say from this area to the bridge.
Please finish.
To the bridge is all downhill. So a lot of this property you see right here is unusable if they get into the 100-year flood zone. Freer Road is up here. It's right along here, you see, well, you can't see it on this map, but these are people's houses. Once we start filling in this property right here, we're so afraid that it's going to flood all of these existing houses.